This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, et cec., notice of which was sent to the record in the Star Ledger and was posted on the Municipal Bulletin Board.
Okay, thank you. Call, call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Here.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Mayor LaBrus.
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have no proclamations or presentations this evening. Need a motion for the approval of the minutes for the October 30, 2018 Cow in Regular Meeting, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? City Manager's Report, please.
Evening, Mayor and Council, invited guests. This is the City Manager's Report for December 11, 2018. The H-Pac Christmas play, "The Christmas Caper," compliments of Greg Liosi and the H-Pac staff, did an excellent job. I personally brought half of my grandkids to the show Friday, and they did an excellent job, and they were so thrilled with the play that they had a great time. The Salt Dome is fully operational now. All the salt was installed. It's located on Kansas Street, on the county property where they have theirs. We're going to share resources and equipment. It was a great act of cooperation between ourselves and Bergen County, and obviously a savings to the taxpayer. The city will be rescheduling a special meeting on January 8th prior to the regular meeting just to discuss the Steib Park Dog Park and the park improvements. Time pending, that would be clerk's office will advertise. So the time will be determined. My guess is if the Cow meeting starts at 6:00, that one will probably be at 5:00 o'clock, but to be determined. Number four, curbside leaf pickup ends December 15th. After December 15th, all leaves must be bagged in brown leaf bags and placed curbside. Pickup of the bagged leaves ends December 31st. 2019 Recycling Calendar Update. It's at the printers as we speak. All suggestions have been taken into account. We hope for everyone is pleased with the new layout. Hackensack Police Department, No Shave November Update. Our police officer on the PD raised a total of $5,755 towards cancer awareness. Excellent job, and I thank them for their efforts. Main Street, Free Holiday Parking from December 10th through December 25th. Nixle Website Notifications Have Been Sent Out. The Building Department Update, 98 notices written, 151 inspections made, 10 summonses issued, 11 CCOs done, 19 sidewalk inspections, 16 Oprah requests have been fulfilled. Finally, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year at every seasonal holiday, Kwanzaa, or any of the other holidays. We just finished Pottica. Thank you. And we wish all a happy and prosperous New Years for 2019. And that ends the City Manager's Report. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, let's get going here. Resolution 482-18.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 46-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack Vehicles and Traffic to establish a new article authorizing valet parking within the city. This is the amended version.
Mm-hmm.
Steve, I don't know if you wanted to say anything on the amendments, and then we need...
Yes.
...to adopt the amendments and then to adopt the...
Yes, yes. So at the last meeting, there was a discussion by, I believe, Deputy Mayor Canestrino regarding a concern over some language regarding signage and how that would be handled. I actually spoke with the city manager in Ridgewood and the Parking Authority manager in Fort Lee to kind of get a better understanding of how all this worked. And, you know, it's generally not an issue because in those towns where you do valet parking, it's a metered spot anyway, so people shouldn't be lingering in that spot before it becomes time to do the valet parking. But in any event, we just amended it to say that if we determine that signage should be covered, they're required to do it. That way, we can determine where the valet parking zones are and figure out what to do. There were two other amendments. One was just simply a numbering correction, and the other was dealing with what happens if there is a meter and they are applying for valet parking at a time when the meter would otherwise be in operation. There was some language based upon the sample ordinances that you'd put a meter bag on and pay the meter bag fee, but if you're only using the valet parking in a metered spot for an hour, I don't know, I think our meters end at 6:00 in a lot of locations. Correct me if I'm wrong? So if you're looking to do valet from 5:00 to 10:00, you know, the potential loss of revenue to the city in a meter is a dollar. So you shouldn't have to pay, it's now, I think, $20 for a day meter bag. So we just simply would say, hey, look, you need to pay what the actual diminution in revenue is to the city. So again, you know, they're really technical corrections. I don't think there are anything that's particularly substantive that would, you know, require going back to first reading on it, because as I said, one's a numbering change, one just simply says pretty much the same thing, and the other just deals with, you know, the situation if there's a meter bag. But the principle behind the legislation stays the same, the way that valet parking will stay the same. And so those were the changes that this amended version makes. So, you know, I think if you choose to go forward with this, I think you would make a motion to adopt the amendments separately, and then assuming that's accepted, then you would go to second reading. And I do know we have a hearing, because I think Mr. Salkin, it sounds like he may have some comments among potentially others.
Except my head, eh?
Okay. With that, I need a motion to open the public, please?
Let's get amended first, then.
Sorry?
Aren't you going to amend it first, and then open?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's...
You can open it right now.
Don't want me to open to the public first, or just go ahead and...
You know what? Why don't we adopt the amendments, then open to the public? I think that's fine. Assuming you choose to do so, of course.
Okay, need a motion to adopt the amendment?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Now you want me to open the public?
Yep. Now I think it's time to have a public hearing on this ordinance, yes.
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk?
Richard Salkin, Hackensack, New Jersey. I understand the purpose of the valet parking. I think you're being supportive of your business community, nothing wrong with that. The issue I have with the ordinance is the on-street, the use of on-street parking to satisfy a valet facility, I think it's called in the ordinance. You really got to think about what this is going to be setting with. First of all, with all due respect to the whatever town you got this from, this is Hackensack, this is not Ridgewood. You're going to be turning your car over. I don't know what spaces these valet folks are going to take. I don't know what other businesses could be affected. Your vision for Main Street, as I understand, is you're putting a lot of more residential and commercial in there, and you're going to tie up spaces, metered spaces, or not metered, I don't know, just un-metered spaces in the area, for this. It's unnecessary, and I'll tell you what else you could do. And I'm not, again, you don't want to be cutthroat towards the businesses you're trying to help, but my gosh, if they're paying a $250 registration fee, and you have Area D, which at night pretty much goes like a ghost town, you know, let it go out of there at a very, very reduced rate, a token rate, or maybe included in the license fee that they have access to it. But don't put this on the street. Get rid of that part. It's not going to work out, and I think you're putting, you know, I hate to be, what's the word? Promoting fear, but, you know, you want your residents to be exposed to, what's going to happen if they, well, we know we've got these 10 spaces, well, we need 15 tonight.
If I could just say something real quickly, because I think you might be misunderstanding something, Mr. Salkin. It's just probably like two spots in front of the restaurant?
No, no, no. That I get, no, 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 not that.
Right. Where we're putting the cars you're concerned about.
That's, that I have no problem with. I get that. That's controllable. That's the drop-off and pickup.
Right.
Okay. No, you have the facility, the parking facility can be on-street parking somewhere else. That's what your ordinance says.
Just to be clear on the ordinance itself, I mean, the city, in order for someone to be able to do this, they will have to come to the city with a parking plan as to how this would be handled. So I think the intention is that, you know, vehicles should be going to a parking facility that is off-site. If someone came, and as we talked about before, I mean, the purpose of this is to avoid congestion, to not make things worse. And as I said, I've spoken to the folks in Ridgewood, the folks in Fort Lee, which are the two towns in Bergen County that do this, and they do indicate that if it is done properly and regulated properly, it does take vehicles off the streets for the price of one or two spots at part of the time. But I would agree 100% that this is all going to come down to when these applications are made. Do they have an appropriate plan? If we do it right, you're not going to have the concern you're raising. If we do it wrong, then you will.
No, but the problem is, why open the door on that? You're going to have to coast to the city manager, or who says he needs. That's probably going to turn out to be the police department, I suspect, which is fine, except Officer Jones may not agree with Officer Smith as to what works. I mean, I just wouldn't, you know, it's a slippery slope, this one. I just wouldn't do it, and it's just, it's a real minor change. I mean, I think you could amend it, take it out. I mean, off-street, fine. Put it in Area D. Work out deals, amend that parking ordinance, but don't let them take spots on the street. You're going to be hurting other businesses and your residents. That's what I think.
I mean, as I said, I think the point itself is a very fair point. You know, I think if it were to become an issue, you know, you can always come back and amend the ordinance if you find that the city is not regulating it in an appropriate way. I guarantee you, Mr. Salkin or somebody else, if that were to happen, would certainly, you know, come back to you and say, hey, hey, you know, wait a second here. You approved a valet parking, and again, it's, I think the intention of it is that you would be coming in with an off-site facility, you know, a bank that's closed after 5:00.
You can limit it that way. You said, from this point, why tempt the devil? Why poke the bear on this one?
I mean, look, and again, if the council feels that it needs to be, you know, more strongly stated that the only proposed valet parking location would be, you know, because again, it sort of implies it, but to be precisely clear that under no circumstances will any operator be allowed to park a car in a on-street location, you know, we can go back and we can do it again, but, you know, again, that will delay this potentially till January for adoption.
Why would it delay? It's a minor change. It really is.
I mean, we'd have to come up with a line, unless I did come up with language on the spot.
You could, you still leave the reference to on-street.
The only thing I would do is if it was Main Street, because you have certain situations, if you take one restaurant, for instance, is closer to some residential streets that are, might be your areas where there's nobody's going to park at night because there's no businesses open there at night at the time, and that would be perfectly, it's two blocks away, and they could park cars there. But, you know, I wouldn't want to hurt people on Main Street by doing it if it was an issue, and I agree with that part.
I see no problem in letting it be the way it is, trusting in the city to monitor it effectively, and if it doesn't work, I, we do appreciate your comment, Rick, but if it doesn't work, we can always amend it. Isn't that true?
Yeah, I mean, that's true.
We have faith and confidence in our city manager and his guys.
And I will say...
Not question and answer, or the woman who gets dealt, and everyone...
I understand.
It's a good thing, but I just think you're turning...
Just putting an extra little control...
Streets over to people that you may know want to turn streets over. That's all I can say.
And I will say this, you know, so the council hears and the city managers hears it, because when I did talk to the folks in those towns, so they said it's been effective and it works, but you do have to monitor it. You know, you have to make sure, you know, even if it's approved, that they're parking the cars where they say they're going to park them. You have to keep your eye on this to make sure it operates, and I think if you do it, you know, you come back and maybe have whoever, the city manager, my office, or somebody come back and report how it's working, you know, after a couple months.
This will be a case-by-case agreement.
That's correct. I mean, right now, you...
In those agreements should be the fact that we can change, if we see things out of control, we can step in and change it at any time.
That's right. And I mean, we are going to have a permit application that's supposed to be made on a form provided by the city, so I mean, if this gets adopted, I guess the next thing we would have to do, Ted and myself, would be come up with an appropriate form that would, you know, set forth the parameters of how this is supposed to work so that, you know, it's clear that they have to abide by these requirements. And again, I certainly wouldn't disagree if, unless there would be some exceptional reason otherwise, the expectation would be, and the practice generally is, you know, they're going to come in and they're going to make an arrangement with a parking lot that, you know, a business that has a lot that's not used at night, that wants to generate some revenue or whatever, and they're going to have to come to us with an agreement that says, hey, look, you know, you can park in the Wells Fargo parking lot. Here's my deal with Wells Fargo that says I can do this. Here's my insurance that says I'm covered. And then at that point, all that gets submitted, and then you say, all right, you know, this is a well-thought-out plan, it's not going to make traffic worse, it's going to get cars off the street. This is the kind of plan that we can approve. But again, we are relying on, you're going to have to rely on your city administration to do it right.
Good luck.
There's other issues as well, too, the times, because the times are not set in stone, so that all has to be worked out in each agreement.
Maybe it's an evolutionary process. We're just starting it, and we're going to learn, and we're going to fix it if it doesn't work. That's all.
Yep. Yes, sir?
Williams again, mayor. Sir, I'd like to ask you a question, maybe a suggestion I'm asking. There's that parking lot in the back of where I think the All Constable is, where it used to be that big parking lot there?
Oh, behind that is...
I don't know what's Area D is. There's a parking lot whereby Bowler City...
Area C.
When I go to Fort Lee and I go to the movie, there's an Ipec Theater. You buy a ticket, and it includes your parking. But why not just, the restaurants just have the little buggies, when the people park their cars, the guy parks the car, he gets the people in the buggy, he takes them to their car, and they leave from there? That'd eliminate a lot of parking spaces on Main Street.
Because a lot of the parking lots you're talking about, Mr. Williams, are going to be under development. Area C, for instance, by Bowler City, will be breaking ground pretty soon, so that will no longer be a parking lot per se.
What about...
Area D is another one, which is discussed, that's part of, I think, we discussed 321 Main Street, that's the spot, that lot behind there, and that actually would have some public parking in that project as well. That's part of our, what we're looking at.
The one I'm talking about, is that big, in back of All Constable, that new restaurant?
Well, this one's more behind, like Musically Yours and those back there, that area back there.
Because there's a lot of space. They used to have auctions, the city used to have, the county had auctions there.
Now we have, there's some, there's some spots around that aren't used at night by the city, which absolutely could do. Now, you know, I don't know whether it's, you know, it, people parking it and having to wait for somebody to come with a buggy, I don't know if that's going to work. That's not my business. You know, we're looking at just this valet ordinance, so...
I mean, the restaurants, that's the way they do it in New York. You park your car somewhere, then you come in with this little jetty thing, and you take it to your car.
And there's a lot of valet, too, where you pull up in front of, I've parked, valet parked a lot of restaurants in New York, and you just pull up, they take your car, and you go in the restaurant, you give them the ticket, you come out, you get in your car.
Yeah, they brought it back.
Yep.
Okay, sir.
Thank you.
Just a suggestion.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else on this ordinance? Seeing none, motion to close to the public?
Offer.
Call, call? Or all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
None opposed? Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed?
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 46-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 483-18.
This is a resolution for final adoption of ordinance number 56-2018, an ordinance authorizing first amended financial agreement between the City of Hackensack and Meridia Metro Urban Renewal, Hackensack LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 48:20-1, et cec. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
Need a motion to open the public?
Offer.
Who seconded?
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Anybody would like to speak on this ordinance, and this ordinance only, please come forward. Seeing no members in the public, need a motion to close to the public?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Need a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed?
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack County, Bergen, and State of New Jersey, that ordinance number 56-2018 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 484-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 54-2018, an ordinance authorizing a 30-year tax exemption for a multi-phase market-rate rental apartment and rental project to be constructed at the former records site by RFEHA Urban Renewal LLC, an urban renewal entity pursuant to the long-term tax exemption law, NJSA 48:20-1, et cec.
Need a motion to introduce the ordinance?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 54-2018, is introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 8, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 485-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 57-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to relocate a bus stop on Essex Street within the City of Hackensack.
Thank you. Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 57-2018, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 8, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
You. Resolution 486-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 58-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 94 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, gardeners, landscapers, horticulturists, and those engaged in commercial snow removal business, to further regulate landscapers within the City of Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 58-2018, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 8, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 487-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 59-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to add a new handicap parking space in Section 49.2, Parking for the Handicap.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 59-2018, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 8, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 488-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 60-2018, an ordinance amending 321 Main Street redevelopment plan.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 60-2018, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 8, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
You. Resolution 489-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 61-2018, an ordinance amending City of Hackensack Rehabilitation Plan for the Main Street area in need of rehabilitation.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 61-2018, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 8, 2019, at 8:00 p.m. or soon thereafter, as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and at such time and place, all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance, and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 490-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 62-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to establish a four-way stop at the intersection of Atlantic Street and Second Street.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed?
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 62-2018, is introduced, is now passed on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage[1649.73] now passed on first reading and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 8th, 2019 at 8 o'clock PM or soon thereafter as the matter can be reached at the regular meeting place of the City Council and at such time and place all persons interested be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance and that the city clerk, being she, is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
Thank you. Resolution 491-18.
This is a resolution authorizing a refund for the Hackensack Building Department.
Need a motion, please? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 492-18.
This is a resolution authorizing tax refunds for duplicate payments, county board judgment, and overpayment.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 493-18.
The resolution of the City Council of the City of Hackensack authorizing the settlement of litigation entitled Amica Terra versus Lupino et Al, Superior Court of New Jersey, Bergen County, docket number B E R L 4400-16.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 494-18.
This is a resolution authorizing a refund for tennis registration.
Need a motion, please? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 495-18.
The resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to purchase and install a bus shelter from New Jersey Transit at the Court and Main Street Bus Stop.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 496-18.
This is a resolution approving the memorandum of agreement between the City of Hackensack and the PBA Local Number 9.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 497-18.
A resolution rescinding redeveloper designation and approval of purchase, sale, and redevelopment agreement with PCP Hackensack Urban Renewal LLC for the redevelopment of Block 419 lots 18, 22, 26, and 27 pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law NJSA 40A:1@SEC.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 498-18.
This is a resolution authorizing a change order number one in the amount of $52,000 to Arcatus US Inc. for the DPW Vapor Tank Excavation and Closer Support Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 499-18.
This is a resolution authorizing change order number one in the amount of $22,454.06 to John's Lawn Service for the 39 Broadway Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project.
Need a motion, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 500-18.
The resolution authorizing change order number one in the amount of $8,427.45. This is a decrease, not an increase, to DLS contracting for the 2018 CDVG Road Resurfacing Project.
Need a motion, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 501-18.
The resolution awarding contract for engineering for the 2019 CDVG Road Resurfacing Project to Neglier Engineering Associates.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 502-18.
The resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $245,551.37 to Deputy Fire Chief Stephen Cowman.
Need a motion, please? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 503-18.
This is a resolution authorizing transfer of 2018 budget appropriations.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Stephanie, second that.
Aye.
Heard it?
Yes, thank you.
Resolution 504-18.
The resolution authorizing cancellation of improvement authorization balances in the general capital fund.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Resolution 505-18.
The resolution awarding New Jersey State contracts for the purchase of four Ford F-350 DPW pickup trucks.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 506-18.
The resolution authorizing the adoption of an interlocal agreement with the Borough of River Edge for sewer services at 250 Johnson Avenue.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Resolution 507-18.
The resolution to award contracts for engineering services for the M&amp;M Building Parking Lot Expansion to Boswell Engineering.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 508-18.
This is a resolution for authorizing the payment of bills.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, does anybody have any conflict before we go forward with the consent agenda? Seeing none?
Okay, the consent agenda consists of Resolution 509-18 through 515-18. All items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or additions. It includes Resolution 509-18, a resolution authorizing reappointment of Dean Metian and Alfred Sorelli as constables for the City of Hackensack for a three-year term. Resolution 510-18 is a resolution amending Resolution 471-18, which was a resolution authorizing the 2009 meeting schedule. Resolution 511-18 is a resolution authorizing reappointment of Special Officers Class 1 for the 2019 calendar year. Resolution 512-18 is a resolution authorizing endorsement of proposed Bergen County Community Development Grants for Heightened Independence and Progress Bergen Volunteer Center, Bergen County Human Services Division of Family Guidance, Alliance Against Homelessness of Bergen County, Fair Housing of Northern New Jersey. Resolution 513-18 is a resolution authorizing Alevevassen, Eluse Elena Alvarez, Keyboarding Clerk 2, bilingual commencing on November 21st, 2018 and ending February 12th, 2019 without pay. Resolution 514-18 is a resolution authorizing the City to enter into a trust fund project contract with the County of Bergen for the purpose of using a matching grant award from the 2017 Funding Round of Bergen County Open Streets Recreation Flood Plan Protection Farm Land and Historic Preservation Trust Fund for Municipal Park Improvement Program. Resolution 515-18 is a resolution appointing Monica Villahana as a replacement member of the Bergen County Regional Community Development Committee. And Resolution 516-2018, the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the City of Hackensack and the UPS EU, which is the Hackensack White Collar Employees. I need a motion.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? None opposed? Is it? Okay, need a motion to open to the public, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who would like to speak, please come forward, give your name and address to the clerk, and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, Larry Eisen, 390 Maple Hill Drive.
Good evening, sir.
I don't know who did it, but somebody paved the big potholes on the northern part of Summit above Passaic. I don't know if the county did it or the city did it, but the worst of the potholes are done, and I thank whoever did it for that.
We will check.
You don't know whether we...
I'm not sure.
There's an ongoing list, I gotta check it. I don't, obviously I don't take credit for other people's work.
They did a nice job covering up the worst of them.
Thank you.
This will be my last council meeting. My wife and I this week are moving to Ointon Beach, Florida. Not to get away from Hackensack because it grieves me a great deal to do that, but because my wife wants to be where our children are, and both of them live in Florida, and our grandchildren are in Florida. And I really love Hackensack. We've had 50 wonderful years here. I've seen the city from my youth in Teaneck, when it was at its high point, and I used to take the 78 bus on Saturday to the Kitty Matinee at the Fox Theater, it was great. And then the Garden State Plaza opened and Hackensack started to decline. I congratulate all of you as a City Council for finally accepting the reality and making a serious effort to restore Hackensack to its glory days. You're off to a very fine start, and I wish you great luck in bringing it back to the times we all remember. We moved here primarily for two reasons. One is that it's close to New York City, and two, we did not want to raise our children in a white ghetto in northern Bergen County. I wanted my kids to be in a school system where they would interact with children of all races, all ethnicities, all nationalities, the beautiful tapestry of the demographics of Hackensack. And it has paid off beautifully. My children simply do not recognize differences between people. They interact with people of all types, they do not consider themselves better, different in any way from any of the people they meet on the street or do business with. And that legacy was worth the 50 years we have spent in Hackensack. To have my children come through, living in this town, and appreciate that all of us are people of their own worth has been a blessing, and I really thank the city for its wonderful demographics. I know some people are reluctant to move into Hackensack because of its demographics, but frankly, those are very narrow-minded people who will never overcome their innate shortcomings. This is a wonderful place to live. I would encourage anybody to come live in Hackensack because here you are living with the demographics of the real world.
Agreed.
And that is a very rare thing to experience in this country.
Thank you, Larry.
I also like to congratulate Mr. Ehrenberg. I think he is the best town manager, city manager we have had since Mr. Squillis. And to me, that's quite a compliment because there was no one quite like Squillis, but head comes the closest. And I wish you all well in the future.
Thank you, Larry.
You too, Larry.
We gotta keep in touch.
You too, Larry. Stay in touch.
I will stay in touch.
Yep, absolutely.
We'll miss you.
Thank you, sir.
Somebody, what, is this yours? Richard Solik in Hackensack, New Jersey. I want to revisit the NW Finance thing. I didn't come to the last meeting, I viewed it on the website. And some statements were made. Now, let me make this clear. I think it's good that you have an economic consultant on these deals because you need that. You need an expertise with you. So I'm not faulting that. But Regina's, the Pasqua's comments that there should have been resolutions, should be a contractor, absolutely true. Because threshold, Mr. Canastrino, as of November 8th, in 2018, they billed and were paid by the city over $39,700. Why put yourself in that position? Someone could, as Mr. Pasqua did, say, is that the tip of the iceberg? What else are you taking shortcuts on? I'm not making that accusation, but why put yourself in that position? You have attorneys and other consultants you hired for like a third of that, that you go through the process of RFQs, resolutions. Do that. I mean, I'm sure you need them, I'm sure they do a good job, I'm not faulting them, I'm not even faulting you. But this, you're off base on this. You messed up, you got a new year coming up, do it right, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Come on, Kat. Chinese restaurant closes soon. If I miss my Chinese food tonight, I'm gonna be really mad, I'm hungry. I'm only kidding.
Okay, Kathleen Tabo again, good evening, and Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and everything else, because I think this is your only meeting, and I'll be going to Florida, so can I get three extra minutes for next month?
Just 'cause Larry's going to Florida, give him an extra time.
But I'm not, you're not getting rid of me, I'll be back.
If you go permanently, you get an extra minute.
Anyway...
Are you staying in Florida? Wait a minute. Are you staying?
No, 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 it's not one of your wishes, don't, enjoy it. Okay, thank you for the Salt Dome, thank you DEP, thank you County of Bergen, thank you DPW and City of Hackensack. That was on my bucket list since, oh my God, forever, and it was on your promise when you first came in to, and DEP helped us with this. Okay, ECDC, safety is unreal, and I talked to Jackie today, and if we have to wait for the spring to fix this parking lot, we might as well wait for the spring to, it'll be done, and we can park there. So we're not gonna waste money on Boswell to enlarge our parking lot if it can't be done till the spring. We needed it like before the building opened.
It's gonna be engineered.
So you might want to consider that last resolution and rescind it to save us money because it's not gonna, it's not gonna happen. It'll be counteracting. So happy to see that the police finally got their contract, and we need a DPW contract. These guys are working for like pennies, we're losing, we lost a couple of them because they can go elsewhere and get more money, and they do a lot in the city. I mean, everything revolves around them. I'm really upset about the Salem-Sussex, this traffic light not coming back yet. It should have never happened, it should have never disappeared, and I wish we would use more of our police department. We have a professional police department and a traffic department, and they don't get input on a lot of these things. And that Sussex Street Salem, I know for sure, and the parking, all the parking spaces that you took on the traffic lane on Atlantic Street, they were against all of that, and somehow our expert engineers rule over our police department. We need to work together, and this mistake wouldn't have happened. But how soon are we gonna get this light back? Are we waiting for a really big accident to happen before this happens? There's accidents on Sussex and Salem all the time, especially Sussex Street. It's like at least once a month, and this is, it's really bad. And again, no traffic, you promised no traffic lights are gonna be removed from Main Street, right? We hear that?
Wait till you're done and then...
Okay, because you promised me that last time, but you have promised me things that doesn't happen, so I don't know. What else? Oh, the outdoor soccer parks that we talked about, that's what everybody wanted. Nobody really wanted that dome, and they said that at a meeting. So if we can facilitate, if we could do little soccer parks to play soccer, that's what the kids want. They want to play on the real stuff, they don't want to play indoors. So we got DPW, no contract, we got the dome, the Christmas tree was beautiful, it was a nice night. We need to get more parking so that we can get a lot more people to attend, they couldn't park, so they couldn't come to their tree lighting services. And it would be nicer if we can get the county to use the county parking lot. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, a moratorium on rebuilding so we don't, any more apartments. Thank you.
Next, please. Oh, Ted? Did you have something? I'm sorry.
The city has engaged the engineer to revisit... Yes, ma'am, that's what I'm doing.
But we don't want to go back and forth, he's just gonna tell you what's happening.
I'm just gonna tell you that the city has engaged an engineer to go back and revisit the study that should have been completed for Salem and Sussex. We are also, I sent out an email today that there will be no removals of any traffic lights on Main Street, and if there are any that are in question, then a full-blown study will be conducted. And for the record, there is not one traffic issue that occurs in this city that I don't refer to the Hackensack Police Department Traffic Bureau through our police director. Has never happened, as long as I've sat in this chair. So, I don't know what you're speaking about, but, there you go.
Mr. Servo, you're on.
Rich Servo.
timer.
46 Spring Valley Ave., Hackensack. Merry Christmas to everyone in the city and on video. And look, I just want to start by saying, I want to thank Larry for his praise of the city and your work, but for everything that's been done, I'd still like to quote Gertrude Stein when she said, you know, there's no "there, there," and believe me, there's no "there, there" when it comes to Hackensack. Okay, so let's move on. Look, Ben Franklin mentioned taxes, and he said that it was the only certain thing in life was that there's death and taxes. So, but I want to add to that, if I can, that the only thing that's certain is death, taxes, and childbirth. So let's welcome all the babies that are coming this season, and maybe some Christmas babies, and Merry Christmas, it's a beautiful thing. Okay, and so let's stay on taxes, and just, I want to mention a few things about, you know, untaxed properties and everything that would round out our tax levy and sort of give a break to homeowners, absolutely. But there's still lots of taxed properties. I don't think we've sat down and negotiated with the county yet to at least lower our tax rate here for the city, for the, I'm sorry, the county seat. I think that's a good negotiating tool, that these properties are untaxed, most of them sit in Hackensack. Most of them sit in Hackensack. That property is just, come on, seriously. Okay, we've turned the corner maybe a little on the hospital. At least, you know, they're ponying up some tax revenue. That's a good thing. But what about schools? There's lots of schools in town that aren't paying taxes also. So the county schools, the college, there's a, partially, we have a college in town that is charging so much for each credit. Why are they not taxed or at least asked to contribute to the city? And lastly, I don't see why we can't open a conversation about all the churches at least making a contribution. I mean, if there's a fire, you know, the fire department is going to put the fire out at the church and pick up their garbage. And so, please, all the untaxed properties, I think it's a great little forum for a discussion. The county, the schools, the churches, and bring more revenue into the city. So, please, okay. Thanks a lot. Merry Christmas to everyone.
Merry Christmas, Mr. Williams. Take care. Thank you.
Mayor, just...
Go ahead, Ted.
Just for the record, through the efforts of Leo Pataglia, we are now revisiting all of our tax-exempt property and properties that were listed that were tax-exempt. Those statuses changes during the permitted use of that. So currently, our tax assessor is going through a review with our tax attorney and the efforts of Leo and the council to go back and make sure that, one, the people that are on this list are appropriately using this for the right purposes, and two, for all the questions that you raised.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Williams, you're up.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the council personally. I mean, I've been coming, I never said this before, I never had nothing good to say, I don't think. But again, I'd like to say thank to...
You're an honest man, Mr. Williams. Thank you.
Predators do, winners do. I'd like to thank the council and Mr. Ted here, and the police commissioner, and the police department. And I had a little problem today and sergeant, not about a sergeant, but the captain and the lieutenant came and talked to me. But since I've been coming from New York over here, I thought I'd get away. I had a place to sleep. And I'm so nervous now when I can't even sleep, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, when I come over here, I'm awake. And I just want to say thank you, Mr. and thank you to the police commissioner, commissioner and everybody else in unusual. But one question I want to ask, Mr. Sam, do you represent the city? Do you ever have anything to say as a whole for peoples of color? That's all. You never say anything. I don't know that much about politics, but I do know I'm spending a lot of money. And also, especially to Mr. Pataglia, whenever I had a problem, I could talk to him. He helped me out, too. Everybody helped me out, but when I can't get no help from you as a man of color. I want to know why. And you're a city councilman, you're a deputy mayor. I've gotten some help from Miss Catterestreter. I've gotten some help from the mayor, the other lady here, I can't pronounce the name. But I tried to call on you. No help, Steffi. I have to go to somebody else. I'd just like to know, why is it you never say anything? Even on appropriations or the people are paying certain things? You never say anything. Is it because you can't talk or what? I don't mean to come off on you. Damn, I mean, I talk about my dollars and cents. Talk about it for us in the community. I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time, and everybody have a safe and happy holiday.
You as well, sir.
You too.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Steph?
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to start out by thanking everyone involved in the tree lighting, the DPW, the rec department, fire, police, our city personnel. It was a really successful night, a big turnout. The weather was great. It was a really nice night with our new tree, so thanks for all the hard work. Just to echo Ted's remarks about the Christmas keeper, we were there the same night with the kids, and it was a really great play. It was very interactive. The kids came out into the stands and interacted with the kids. It was really nice, and I hope to see it again next year. In regards to the resolution we passed for the $100,000 grant for Fashini improvements, it's another step forward in that project, so that's exciting. Looking forward to having some great improvements. It's a great facility. There's a lot of fields there. If we could just get the flooding under control, I think would, you know, bring in a lot of different teams and different games to the field, and I'm excited for that. And to Larry, we'll definitely miss you, Larry. We've always had great advice to offer and input. I'm glad to hear your remarks about your children. I know they wound up to be very successful, and like you, that's why I moved to Hackensack. I moved here in 2007, a little bit after you, but for the same reason, I wanted a diverse community, a real-life experience for my kids. There's a lot of little towns in Bergen County that you could live in and be isolated, but to me, it's important for kids to be exposed to a lot of different people, a lot of different experiences. And it's been a great experience for me so far, 10 years later. So, you know, that's why I'm here. That's why, you know, we're involved in sports and different things, and I'm just happy to follow in your footsteps, Larry. To everyone else, have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I think it was a really successful year, and I look forward to another one next year. Thank you, everyone, for your help.
Thanks, Steph. I agree about the tree lighting. I was there, too, and it was a new tree, but it looked spectacular. Not as big as the old one, but it's going to get there. And it was a nice size, and everyone did a wonderful job in decorating the park. And yes, the weather cooperated as well. So thanks to everyone throughout the city that was part of that. And the same for the Christmas keeper. I took my grand, two of my grandchildren as well, and they thoroughly enjoyed it, as did I. I mean, I think they did a great job. The performers were wonderful. You know, the sets were great, the set designs. Downstairs in the gallery area, they had everything set up, and the children actually got to go meet and see Santa. I think it was something really nice, again, something for the community, getting folks involved. It was very, very well done. Looking at the docket, a few things I always try to talk about, the redevelopment activities, and there's a few things on here. We talked about valley parking, and it's one of the ordinances tonight, and again, a critical part of the success of our downtown. You know, we know that we're looking at a major change that's been going on, a real renaissance in our city, and we want to support the retail portion of that as well. So I think it's critical that the city cooperates to the greatest extent so that we can support the new retail community and make it successful for everyone involved. Another thing on here was the one redevelopment project that is open on State, on the corner of State and Warren. We renegotiated their pilot. Again, that was the first pilot that was negotiated, not by this council, but by the prior council. And that particular pilot had some maximums that were installed in it, and that's not true of any of our other pilots. So we were able to convince those folks to change it and make it similar to all of our other pilots, so the more money they make, the more money the city makes. And this is a win-win for the city and for them as well. On tonight was a discussion of the record property that's starting to move. Again, that's a huge piece of property here in the city, and that's going to be a phased development. So you're not going to see it built all at once. They're looking at at least three phases, maybe even a little bit more. Phase one will have 272 apartments. That's what we're really talking about now. That will also include the development of the entire Riverwalk. You know how we've been encouraging anyone who's on the river to build that Riverwalk? This is going to be probably one of the nicest portions and well-displied of the Riverwalk. So they're also going to do that as phase one, as well as access, so from River Street, providing an amenable access so the community can also come on a nice afternoon and take a walk on the Riverwalk and enjoy that while, once the development is in place. So that, again, is a very positive thing. We've gone through some updates to our rehabilitation criteria, and some of this is in line with what we see happening in the state. One of the, a couple of the big things are that we used to, for stick frame development, there was a maximum of five stories that could be built. And as that has changed throughout the state, we've now upgraded and we will allow stick frame building up to six stories where it's four over two, so where you have two floors of a garage and then four residential above. So we looked at things like that, about changes to signage. It's an evolutionary process. As we learn, as developed, new developers come in with new ideas, as a city, we want to continue to grow. So we're always going to be updating and making changes and trying to keep everyone informed as well. Lots of things to be happy about tonight, lots of things. I mean, the Salt Dome, that's wonderful, Ted. I mean, that was a huge savings for the city to have the county provide that for us, that space. So again, thanks to the county, thanks to Jim Tedesco for stepping up and working with the city. I mean, that land was there, it was theirs, and to allow us to be able to use that for our salt storage as well is great. So again, thanks. I know Ted and I know Mayor LaBrosse were key in working with the county on that. So again, congratulations to both of you for pulling that off. More grant money for Fashini Park. I mean, that's always a good thing. We know we need to do some work down there, especially with the flooding and the drainage. So again, having another $100,000 grant be awarded tonight, that was, that was great. And most, most happy about is our memorandum of understanding with both our PBA and our white-collar workers. To me, I know we have a wonderful, wonderful police department, and we would be nothing the city that we are today without them and their continued support. Everyone knows I have a soft spot for the police department. My husband's a retired police captain. My brother-in-law is a retired police officer, all Hackensack. But we are so honored as a council to have you here and supporting the city the way you do, and we can't appreciate you enough. And I'm so happy that you were able to come together with our city manager and our city officials and come to an agreement that, to me, looks like a great agreement, and I hope the men in the police department are happy about it, too, and look forward to more good years and more great support from our police department. Same with white-collar, all of our employees. I mean, we wouldn't be the city we are without them. Finally, Merry Christmas to everyone. Happy holidays for those that celebrate. And Larry, I'm sure going to miss you, so don't be a stranger. Larry's used to always just popping by my house unannounced every once in a while. The doorbell will ring, and who's there with Larry? So Larry's seen me in all different stages, without makeup, with a couple of curlers in her hair, so I never know when Larry's going to pop up. So Larry, I'm going to miss you. Best of luck to you in Florida. Good night, everyone. Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Dave?
Larry, I want to wish you the best and thank you for these kind words.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams, I think as an African-American council person, I've done more for the African-American community than any other councilman has ever done in this city. And if we, if I missed you by any chance, I apologize. I want to salute the police officers and the city manager for coming together and getting this contract done. Thank you both. The children's holiday party this past weekend was one of the best holiday parties I've ever seen in 20 years. Take my hat off to Rose, Greg, Frank, the whole staff. Kudos. The senior bus ride for the seniors was sold out for the third year in a row. Last Sunday, I took part in the city's first menorah parade. It was a celebration of Hanukkah as we traveled through the city with menorah lighting on the top of our cars, and we met at the, on the green over there by the courthouse where I met the mayor, and we lit the first candle for Hanukkah. Last Friday, it was a retirement party for Sharon and Barbara at the Johnson Library where they unveiled a portrait of Sharon and hung it up in the director's gallery. We sure will miss her. Kwanzaa. This Thursday at 5:30 at Nellie K. Parker, they're having a big Kwanzaa event. It used to take place in the rec center. This year has moved to Nellie K. Parker. Hopefully, all will come out. This past Sunday, after a two-year search of replacing Reverend Manning at New Old Baptist Church, they announced a new senior pastor, Reverend Dr. Drew Kendall Ross, who we're looking forward to sit down with the police director and the city manager. This past week, the city won a grant to have two members of the world famous Harlem Globetrotters have a basketball clinic this Sunday at the high school main gym from 2:00 to 4:00. In closing, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Dave. Leo?
Hey, Larry, first of all, you know, I wish you, like, to have a good, good time in your new city. We're going to miss you. Thank you for everything you did for us, you know. And I am really happy that finally we got a contract for the police officer, and that thing is over, and I want to thank the police director and the rest of the police department because they're making an effort to try to control the speeding in the area, like the Fenton section and the Spring Valley Row. They are doing a good job. I got a letter from William Rivera saying that they never saw the area so clean in the last few weeks. Thank you to the DPW guys because they're doing a good job. And I think they're going to start a remediation with the shooting range in the next couple of weeks, and when that has been done, we maybe, we can get that done the way the kids can have an indoor place where they can play different kind of games. They can play soccer, football, you name it. Right now, the kids are going to play in castles, and they have to play like $20,000 to try to use the indoor facility. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you, guys.
All right. This was repeated, said before, the Hack Pack had the Christmas keeper, which was a wonderful show. Unfortunately, I couldn't get over there Saturday night because my wife was sick, but I was looking forward to see it this year because I heard how good it was. Tree lighting was a big success, had a great group of people there. As Kathy mentioned, the weather was good, and that will only grow as the tree grows. The Salt Dome, in conjunction with the county, that's a great deal for us. The saving on that was, and it was mentioned in conversation, it's probably close to $1 million, having that Salt Dome there. We would have had to buy property, we would have had to erect it, it would have cost us a fortune to put that up somewhere. So the city saved a lot of money by the county working with us, which is very important for us to work with the county, and I'm glad to say and happy to say we've been working very well with the county. Was mentioned, lead pickup, piles of leaves, last day is 12/15, you know, December 15th. After that, you have to bag it, and that ends on 12/31. So most of the trees have let their leaves loose, so let's get these leaves up and out of here. I want to also congratulate, she's not here tonight, she was here the other night, our new library director, Tara. She's doing a great job. As was mentioned before, from December 10th to December 25th is free parking on Main Street. You'll see red bags saying free parking for all the shoppers, so that's a good thing. The holiday party that Dave mentioned, had a good group of kids there, a lot of kids, and we had a good time watching them. They had a lot of fun. The new religious group that moved to town, Shabbat, is a new congregation at Beth Israel on Summit Avenue. And I was part of that. We drove through town, it was a sight to see, all these vehicles with menorahs on top driving all through town, and did about a mile or two, ended up at the county courthouse where we hooked up and then were able to light the first Hanukkah candle, which was, which was fun. Rabbi Mendy, as I call him, also, right after the Pittsburgh shooting, had a special meeting there, a special service there, which several of us went to, and it was quite moving, and they had a rabbi from Germany who was outstanding speaking. Police Department contract, couldn't be happier, guys. It's been a while, and, you know, this council sits back and waits for this to happen until it finally comes to us. And we're very pleased that it's done and over with. You guys do a great job, and we look forward to moving forward, and we're glad it's behind us, and it's a good night, believe me. Mr. Eisen, relocating to Florida. Wow. It's where my father lived till the end of his life, actually, Boynton Beach, Florida. So it's funny. Yeah, absolutely. So, and he lived a long life, and I hope you do, too, as well down there. But you and I go back, we were political opponents, like a 30-vote difference between the two of us. 34 votes between us, and we've become pretty close friends since then, and we get along very well. You've always been a gentleman. I don't care where we are, who it's with, you've always acted professionally and been a gentleman. So we're going to miss you, and keep in touch. Make sure I get some contact numbers from you. I want to announce something that I just found out about this week. Hackensack native, Michael Delaney, all right, who lives over on Heath Place, his parents lived on Heath Place, he was born and raised here, just became the first commanding officer of the brand-new nuclear submarine, the USS Montana. This is like the go-to weapon the United States has as far as submarines go. There is no better in the world. And a kid from Hackensack has gone through the academy and is now the commanding officer on the most threatening ship in the U.S. Navy arsenal, which I think is pretty cool. So kudos to Michael.[1797.04] So kudos to Michael. I've known him and his brother went to school with my son, same age and good family and couldn't be prouder when I hear things like that. So that's good for Hackensack. I don't know if Kathy mentioned it or not. We were part of the home and moving's coming down and they're already tearing it down as we, you know, were speaking. There was a groundbreaking ceremony. We went over, put the helmet on, threw a little dirt and Leo was there. And that'll be moving pretty soon. That building will be down. The record property, that's gonna be, you know, it's 19 acres, so they have to do it in phases. There's no way they can do that project in one big phase. So you'll see it going in bits and pieces. But you'll see some retail on River Road as well as in, near the river, so that's gonna be nice. Mr. Williams, you know, I may not agree with everything David Sim does, but I can tell you one thing, he does a lot for the people in Hackensack. Not just African-American, he does a lot for a lot of people. Kids with book bags, Thanksgiving turkeys. He's always at the shelter every Thanksgiving when I'm there. And he does a lot for the African-Americans in this community. So you just, you know, maybe you haven't seen it, but I would recommend you sit down and talk with him and go over it. And with that, I wanna wish everybody a wonderful holiday season. If you've already celebrated Hanukkah, God bless you. Hope you had a great Hanukkah. It's Kwanzaa. Have a great Kwanzaa. And for the rest of you, have a Merry Christmas and a wonderful New Year. We won't see you until January what? Eight? January 8th's the next meeting. So everybody have a wonderful Christmas, a Happy New Year and God bless everybody. Thank you. Motion to close. Hopper.